You're an attorney too. God bless you. What's that? Yeah, exactly. Don't be funny. I remember you. I'm just joking. So the charge dropped, right? I walk away. That's it, right? And I'm moving on. No attorneys. Your attorney, do you agree with that? Can't kill a dead man. Walk away. No, absolutely. I didn't walk away. What was I charged with? Think about it. What?
The fire.
No. Phyllis, I love you. How much love I've always had for you. She's true. I mean, your sister, so.
15 seconds.
I get charged with attempted murder. Do you all understand that? Now, bring up this city. This city, the FBI and its citizens' crime report revealed that out of the 100 safest cities in this state, North Miami Beach is ranked number 95. Under the auspices of time?
Yes, you have three minutes.
That's it?
95 is the crime. I'm here to answer that.
95, number 95.
Next speaker, please. Thank you so much.
She's going to yield her three minutes to me. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much.
So much.
Thank you so much. The FBI citizens' crime report revealed--
The time is up, sir.
She just yielded her time to me, ma'am.
We're going to move to the next speaker.
No, no, ma'am. No, no. Did you study the city charter? I'm one of the original title holders in this sound, my young lady. I gave my time. She yielded her time to me. She yielded, that's allowed in the court-- that's allowed in Senate, in the House of Representatives. It's allowed here. She yielded her time to me. Number 95 out of the 100 safest cities in this Florida, in Florida, this state. Our murder rate is more than three times, triple the national average. I mean, good Lord, we're making Opa-locka look like the Vatican. And our police department has lost its accreditation. The only police department in the nation that lost its accreditation. It's not an accredited police department. All under the auspices of this man, our mayor, our chief executive, also, ergo, the president of the city of North Miami Beach.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Karen Harold.
God bless.
Joey, if, Joey, if Phyllis is your sister, what am I?
Well, you're both my sisters.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait.
Thank you so much. Let's keep it moving, Madam Chair.
It's okay.
Karen Harold, resident of North Miami Beach. Thank you for your service.
She yielded her time.
She just called me. I don't think he spoke for three minutes. Anyway, whatever you want to do. I did, but he didn't speak for the three minutes. Do you want me not to speak?
He didn't use it all together?
No. Anyway, I just want to say thank you to the mayor, vice mayor, all the commissioners, city manager, and to the city attorney. Thank you for serving us, the residents of North Miami Beach. And I just ask that you make this process of finding our next wonderful city manager very transparent and that you look out for us. It's our tax money that goes towards creating that budget. We live here. I just had a shooting on 5:30 Saturday afternoon, right on the corner of my house. Ross Lowe's going alive. But I came here. I came here because I care about the city. And I want you all to care about us and not pick somebody because it's easy. Go through the process. Do the background checks. Be transparent, okay? We need you to watch out for us. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, or is it commissioners and city staff. My name is Mara Hock. I am a proud resident of North Miami Beach. I am here tonight because the position of city managers is one of the most important decisions you would make for our city. We deserve a process, a process that is completely transparent, professional, and fair. I respectfully ask that you do these two things. First, do not appoint anyone to this, to this position until an exhaustive and proper background check has been completed. And, and completed appropriately, sorry. Second, give residents the right to observe at least one public interview with a candidate or candidates. Rushing to an appointment, a pre-selected individual at this meeting without these basic steps would feel like a lack of respect, accountability, and fairness to the people who live here and pays the bills. We are watching the process very closely. We trust that you will choose openness and integrity over speed. Thank you for your service to our city, and I pray you all will have the wisdom to do the right thing. I would like to say this. Today, I called like over 30 people, and 25 told me that they could not come here, but they would be watching on live because they want to see the first thing done too. Thank you.
Irene Pellinger, and then former Commissioner Barbara Kramer.
Good evening. My name is Irene Pellinger. I sent you all an email. I only got a response from one of you, so that was so encouraging. So my understanding is that the way this process is working, each commissioner is supposed to select three recommendations from an approved list of qualified candidates. The number of selections published with the list attached to today's meeting has a total of 22 recommendations. If seven people each have three choices, the maximum number of selections should be 21. And I'm not really good at math, but I mastered that little thing there. It seems to me that someone submitted more than three recommendations, while others may have stuck to only the three allowed. That makes this an unfair playing field. Secondly, some candidates don't seem at all qualified, excuse me, at all qualified. Although I didn't read all the resumes, the very first one belongs to a person who managed a lacrosse team and worked in a restaurant and a few other little jobs. How is it that any commissioner supports this person to manage the city? Would you allow a physician's assistant to perform heart surgery on you? Or be open to having a plumber set your broken leg? How is it that a commissioner has such poor judgment to give this person one vote, for lack of better word? I'm thoroughly disheartened that any of our elected officials would make a choice like this. Throwing away your recommendation on an unqualified applicant diminishes the process of choosing the person who is most likely to succeed in leading our city. In my opinion, having a track record of turning around a city's budget from red to black in a single year is pretty good evidence of being qualified. In my opinion, ignoring this and putting forth a candidate who is good at the grill of a restaurant reflects poorly on your judgment and shows the public that you aren't qualified to make important decisions on our behalf. Please get it together and ensure that you adhere to the process you agree to and that there is someone overseeing the process who has the backbone to make sure the rules are enforced. It doesn't bode well when it seems that we haven't even been able to execute the first step of the process correctly. Thank you, and the best of luck to you.
I want to recognize North Miami in the House. Thank you for coming. We love you.
Good evening. I don't know where the mayor is, but when the public's talking, and especially about something this serious, the fact that he's not sitting up here is not only insulting, it's very discouraging to the process that's about to be before you. I am unprepared, which is kind of unusual. Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara Kramer. I'm unprepared. I just, you know, can't tell you how many phone calls I've been on this weekend, today. I mean, it got to the point that I was actually ordered not to talk about the city yesterday from my husband, whose birthday it was. Happy birthday, honey. I know you're watching. Anyway, I don't understand why the names of each, that each of you submitted has not been sent to me. I did a public records request. Apparently, the clerk still hasn't received that. This is public knowledge. You have it. You have it right with you now, and I think that needs to be brought by the forefront. We all need to know who you put in place because, as one of our residents said, there's 23 names. And it's rumored that some people might have put in four, but some people only put one, which is, which is just shocking. There should be three names by each of you. So I would like for you all to hopefully ask for this information and bring it forward this evening. There's so much concern about this manager appointment. Our city continues to move sideways. It moves backwards. It goes nowhere. We need an experienced city manager with proper credentials and proven leadership of many employees, not just a few. We need transparency. We need accountability. We need background checks, and we absolutely need an interview process that we can all witness. Wake Up NMB would like nothing more to applaud your decision in the upcoming weeks that it'll take to do it. We don't want to constantly have to shine a light on this city. We want to applaud you and not always show the misgovernance that we keep seeing by many of you. So please get this right. Please turn our city around.
Kay Joashim, then Levens Jean.
She's first.
Lady's first.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. My name is Kely Joashim, and I reside in the city of North Miami Beach. In the years that I've lived, first of all, I would like to thank Andrew Platkin for stepping up in this position. I know it's not easy. It takes someone with backbone to put their name on this list to want to be city manager of North Miami Beach. I've lived here in the city, and I am telling you, the things that we have all seen, the ones of us who have lived here, have lived here since 1995, the city managers, they have been chewed and spit out. It takes someone who really wants to do right by North Miami Beach to apply for this. So I thank each and single candidate that have applied. I'm sure they have watched us over the news. They have gone into YouTube and see what most members of this commission, of other commissions, have done to the people that were our city managers. I've spoken, I think all of you by now should know where I stand. I've given you the candidates that I feel that the people that are with me think would be able to do this job. But at the end, it's up to them if they really want to step up into the city because we have not really been very cordial. Or when it comes down to be civil, it has gotten really nasty when this commission, this body, or others have had to let people go. So I want to thank, thank you all candidates who have put your name on this list. I really care about you, and I really love the city of North Miami Beach. Otherwise, I would have left a long time ago. So I'm asking each and single one of you in this body, take your time, do the research, and really do pick the right person because you have some great candidates, but you all know where I'm at. So have a wonderful evening.
Ergo, good evening. My name is Levens Sajin. Before I start, let me clap my hand for my police officer. They always do a good job. Guys, folks, you do a good job in this area. I'm watching you all the time. When I call you guys, you never, couple second you come to my house, couple second when I say something, you always be there. So I'm so happy for you guys, police officers. You always, you're working hard. You know exactly how to talk to the people. You know exactly how to manage the situation. Now, I'm talking to the city mayor, the new mayor came in. I heard about that, so I came in here for that. Thank you, guys, and I would like to ask the mayor, the new mayor in the city, the councilman in the city, you guys need to help us in this community. Festival, I'm the homeowner. I live in Miami Beach for 29 years. I know a lot of faces off, that know my face, but I need your help. I need help for everybody in this area. Not even that when the election came in, you need us. No, I need you now. You need to help me now. I got problem in my house between about two years from now, never resort. I went to the city fighting for the problem. When the inspector came in, always come and always give us problem, but I need that to be done. I'm tired about that. I love my area. I love my community, but wake up for us. We need to fight for us. That's all I need. I need you guys to fight for us. And also, I request that on the street, East Drive need to repair. I don't know who's on charge. The East Drive need to be repaired. When the accident came in, you guys on trouble. The sidewalk need to be fixed. The road need to be fixed. They never fixed between 29 years. Crack everywhere. That's why I need to be done. I request that to the young lady behind me. She know what I'm talking about. She's coming to my house to make her picture, but I'm not satisfied. Nobody do nothing. But at this time, please, help this community. Help East Drive. Remember the Jackson Hospital, all employee Jackson car pass by, speed up. We need a speed bump in this area. Please, a lot of kids play on the sidewalk. We need a speed bump. Too many cars driving speed, not highway. I don't want something happen, now trouble, channel 10, channel blah, blah, blah. I don't want that. If I'm in this area, I need to fight for my community. That people know me. Please, my name is Levens. I need you, I need your help, guys. I need your help. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniel because my head wears 15240, not distant coat. Okay? So tonight, I am here tonight to speak to my neighbor because our commissioner, we vote, we choose you. My neighbor, they send me here tonight to tell each of you, thank you, thank you. Because for the good job you've been done in my neighborhood, because we've been fighting for that thing for a long time, long time, nothing ever done. So, so far, at this year, all seven of you, listen to us, to our neighbors, you make everybody happy. Thank you very much. Keep doing a good job. Because now, another thing, each of you, everyone up here, vote for you. Vote for each of you. We put trust in you and everyone. We put you here. We don't go out to vote just crazy. We vote for friends, things like that, because we living in the city. We care. We spend money. We pay tax. We have to choose the good people who could lead us to do thing for us, for everyone, not one group, for everyone who live in that city. So you have power to choose anyone you like, he could do the job, the city manager. You got the key to choose. Don't be afraid, scared anybody say thing different about us. We put trust in each one of you. You do good. You not going to choose someone who don't have no experience for that position, send three month, five month, we have to looking for another one. Now, you all got my vote, my neighbor, you got my vote. Choose. Don't be afraid. Do the best thing for the city. Choose whatever you like, the city, you choose it. That's my neighborhood. That's why they send me here, to tell you, do your job, but don't be afraid, do the thing. Everybody, I put trust in you. You all doing good. All right? Thank you.
Trish Miller. I live on Lake Moffett over here on 171st Street, where it floods every single time it rains. And anybody who comes down there knows there's a wake. And then it dissipates after a while. I don't know what causes it, but it'd be nice if the city would look into what causes us to have to deal with that every single time it rains. But that's not what I'm here for. I'm here to talk about discipline. We're about to appoint a city manager. And the city manager has to be somebody that we trust and somebody that has the stones to say, no, no, you can't afford that. No, you don't need to be doing that right now. No, you need to look at the bigger picture and look at the neighborhoods that have not been serviced, the neighborhoods that need you over here, and you need to think about what the people need. And sometimes it's hard to listen to somebody who says, no. Suze Orman is a financial advisor, and I don't know how many people who are familiar with her, but she has a show, and she has, people come in and they say, well, Suze, I've done this my whole life, and I've saved up all this, and I've worked very hard, and I really want to take this trip on the Queen Mary over to England. And she'll go, you can't afford that. And it's hard. People think they deserve it. You think you're commissioners. You think you want to go on trips. You think you deserve it. You got this far. But we are a city. You represent all of us, all the people. And we need you to be fiscally responsible, and you need to care for all of us. And you need to think about, if I do this today, what does that mean down the line? If I hire somebody who's just gonna yes me to death, where's the discipline? Without discipline, there is no success, ever, in anything. Discipline, internal discipline, not the kind where you beat somebody, but internal discipline is the precursor to success in everything. And that's what our city needs, and we need somebody who will carry a big stick and not be afraid to say no, and not be afraid of being fired because they're honest. And that's my fear. So I hope you all put your heads together and we get the best possible person. Thank you.
Good evening, Bruce Lamberdo. As Trish just mentioned, you know, we have an opportunity here to pick somebody with a backbone, somebody that's going to be able, somebody that's going to be able to count to four, or five, or six, you know, instead of just one or two, because that seems the way our city's being run. We have some honorable people up here, but your voices aren't being heard. You're being overshadowed by the mayor, maybe one or two of the other strong commissioners here with big mouths. We talked about the flooding issue. We have a lady that lives over by Ruth that lives on 174th Street, has to have knee-deep water to get to her front door. Our Public Works Director came out there and looked at it and said, yeah, this is a problem. You don't have drainage here in the street in front of your house. It's going to take a lot of money and a long time to fix this. Well, we had a quarter-inch-deep puddle, four foot in diameter, in front of one of our commissioners' houses over in Eastern Shores. All of a sudden, all of you vote for, to spend $253,000 to repave a street that was just recently repaved. We didn't have that money. We didn't have that money to do traffic calming. We moved the traffic calming to next year so that we can use that money to pay for some emergency stormwater repairs on 164th Street. But yet, we had the money to come up with to pay this thing. And I'm really disappointed because this affects one commissioner, but we have seven up here, six up here. And you guys should have the intestinal fortitude to tell, say, no, we're not going to vote for this. This is our, this is taxpayer money. We're not going to play these special games. And this is just one example. This goes on with other issues that are here. The only way we closed our budget this past year was by taking $12 million out of our reserves. The mayor's real proud that we left $5 million there. We left $5 million for you people. What are you going to do this year? We're still in deficit spending. We're still spending $12 million a year more than we're taking in. We're not cutting back. And where are you going to get the money when budget time comes up nine months from now? Milledge rate increase? I mean, I guess that's the only option you're going to have unless you cut spending. And stuff like this Japan trip, and Morocco trip, and all these other trips everywhere else is not, you don't do that when you're, when you owe money. You know, if we had a big budget surplus, have at it, you know, but we're not there. And you guys aren't doing anything to cut it back. So I'm just hoping that we do hire a strong manager, not somebody that's already employed here because it's just going to be more of the same. You need somebody that's outside the city to come in and have the backbone to say no to the mayor or a commissioner, and everything of substance should go before all of you. All of you should vote on a trip to Japan or some other extraneous feature there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last line speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mubarak Kazan. Thank you for inviting me. I want to thank the staff. This is the end month of the year. A lot of staff had responded to residents cleaning the alleyways, chopping trees, you know, a lot of things. And I just want to reach out and thank them all. Thank you very much to Mr. Mayor, City Manager interim. Tonight, you're here, I don't think you're here according to what I heard from Mr. Geller. This, tonight, is where you're going to narrow the field down to a smaller group. And then they would be getting a vetting process. You would be getting a background check. This city is under the operation table to get a heart surgery. That is how bad we are. The ship is sinking. We need a captain who can take this ship across the straits safely. We need a surgeon who can do heart surgery really well, not the janitor who was walking and give you a smile and you, oh, man, that, that person smiled at me so nicely. Let them do the job. It doesn't work like that. This is not your own cook shop. According to Mr. Geller, he said if you're running a shoe store, manager for a shoe store or a burger, a burger joint, don't apply for the job. You have to get experience. That is what we're looking for. That is what we're looking for here tonight and onwards. This is just one of the process to begin, the process of hiring a proper city manager. We've had, as soon as we fire somebody, a name was pushed out right away. No vetting, no nothing. The person came. We buying buildings without the right appropriate funding, using wrong funds and all of these things. That was a city attorney that you had hired. We need to be careful. We hired friends, we hired friends of friends. It didn't work out. If most of you are here for like at least the last eight years, six years, eight years, and if you have not learned anything over the last six to eight years of the mistakes that we've made hiring people, then you do not deserve to be there. I think Mr. Chernov, you probably there now for like 20 years. You have good experience in hiring. We need somebody right now to do a heart surgery. This is what we need, not a friend of a friend or, you know, we don't need inbreeding. Inbreeding, you would not get good results. You know it. A guy who wants to get a good cattle farm going, he borrows the neighbors'
Time.
bull for that. So we don't need inbreeding. Thank you very much for having me.
Any other speakers? None has come forward, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item on the agenda is 4.1.
Public comment is closed.
Public comment is closed. Next item is 4.1. City manager position and the action plan. I know that we initially put this out to, put this posting out several months ago. We were going back and forth in the process, had a couple, at least one special meeting since then that led us to where we are now. So now we've gotten the applications and we're following pretty much, you know, this, I wouldn't say official process because we kinda did it, undid it a little bit, undo it a little bit, not too long ago, but now we're, we're. I'll speak up. That, I'm not shouting, I'm speaking up. That being said, we're in this, we're in a position now to really make a decision. I hope, you know, we can be a little bit more serious in taking this because obviously there's a lot of people here and I want us to be taking this very seriously. So I'm gonna start off to my right side and then go down to hear everybody starts. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on what I would like to see. First and foremost, I know that math is one of my favorite subjects and I know that three times seven is 21. This was not from the Human Resource Department. This was from us personally. And if we called 26 people and we felt out of 26, four of them needed to be heard by our fellow commissioners, that's what our job is, is to make sure the people that we feel would be good in that seat are heard. So I personally put in four names. And I did that by saying, why don't I put in three names with an alternative? And our director said, can I narrow to three? I went back and spoke to them again and I said, no, my third choice is too close. Why would I not give all of my commissioners an opportunity? Somebody put in five names. Somebody must have put in two names. The point is, we've narrowed it down to the names we want to interview. Now, I hope my colleagues will give us each an opportunity to say who we put down and why. The person that they're talking about, I spoke to every single person on that list except one, the person that has experience as a lacrosse player. I did not get to speak to him because he didn't call me back. So I would like to know, what am I missing? I would like to know from my colleague whoever recommended him, why? Maybe there's something I don't know from his resume that said he has no experience. Maybe there's something I don't know. So I'd like us to say, why did you select that person? What are the qualities you see that would make that person be our manager? There's not that many that would take that long. When we narrow it down, I want to make sure that Human Resource and the Police Department have time to do the proper background check. It can't be done in a day or two. I was hoping to have at least a preliminary, but there is no preliminary. It takes a few days, it could take a week. But I think that that is imperative. And I think that when we narrow it down and get the police reports back, that should be a public question of the last few people. The public should have a right to hear the questions we ask. The public may even write down some questions. We may not have time to get to them, but that was a suggestion, I thought a good one. If we have time to get to them, we're happy to do it. Or we could review those questions and maybe we could ask them. But this is a very serious prop, this is, of all the decisions we make up here, and millions of dollars are involved, and lives can be affected whether you have a flood on your street or not, this is the most important decision we make. And I'm telling you, there's reasons people are selected and there's reasons they leave. But we need to look for somebody that wants to be here, somebody that has the desire to face the challenge. And Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners, I hope we get an opportunity not to rush this night through, but to say, here's who I picked and here's the reason I picked them. And if you have any questions in your mind about them, then that's a good opportunity to hear what the person selected those names are all about. I'll tell you, I spoke to some darn good, darn good candidates, darn good candidates. Unfortunately, maybe their time, there's a gentleman that was, I spoke to him today, his name was Shane. Now I don't remember his first name or last name and I didn't bring my own records, but he withdrew. He wanted me to tell the commission that he unfortunately had to withdraw. His wife has become ill, but he returned the call. And, you know, some of the people I spoke to who wouldn't make it on my list, who wouldn't be the manager, I hope they have a place in our city. These are extraordinary people that have degrees in engineering, that have degrees that we need, extraordinary people. So they won't be manager, but I threw out there, maybe, maybe there's a place in our city for you. And I'm going to share them with the new manager, whoever the new manager is. So I thank you for my time. I, I hope we do the process that we each get to know who you wanted to be, the new manager through you and the reasons why. And I hope then at that point, if we're going to narrow for a few, that's when the city will kick in, the city will make sure that their police record is clean and they'll set up a date with all of them. It takes a little while to set up when they can all come the same night and be interviewed. So I thank you very much.
Commissioner Florham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Smith, and everyone that's here this evening. So as it relates to this process, it has been one that I think is, is a bit exhaustive for our residents because it's been pretty fluid in nature, right? So one of the reasons why we had talked about getting a firm to help us in this process was so that we can have some, some sort of a, of an outside assistance to help us manage this. And, and so we decided with time that that wasn't the best route to go. But I do applaud our team for all of the assistance that they've given thus far in HR and the management office and our city attorney's office to get us this far. Now, as far as the list is concerned, the first round, we had several names that were put on the list and we agreed that those names that were on the list the first round, we would not, we would, we would accept those names, right? And, and I believe those names are in fact reflected on this list. So in my seat, I decided to add one name to that list in addition to whatever was already there. And so I decided to add Marlene Monastim to the list. And so there's, there's value in a lot of the different names that we have on this list. But I, I think that we need to look at a lot of different things. To me and my seat, it, it's valuable that somebody's able to have five people that say, hey, we're willing to look at a particular, a particular candidate for this position. I think that's valuable because you need to make sure that you have buy-in from a lot of your, a lot of your quote unquote bosses. So, so that's a good thing. I think we heard comments also about picking someone or bringing someone from the inside, from North Miami Beach. I believe we have a lot of qualified people in our city. We have a lot of employees that are working very, very hard to make sure that this city moves forward. Some employees that are balancing several positions that are not filled to make sure that they do what's necessary to move their departments forward. So we do have a lot of talent here. Aside from that, there were some others that I did notice as well that I did sit down and meet with. Some of them are here right now that are on this list. You know, Mr. Williams and Ms. Camo are here. Had an opportunity to sit down with them and talk with them. So, and then Mr. Leonard as well, I see is on this list. So had an opportunity to talk to several people. I got a few phone calls as well. And honestly, in my seat, I think that I'm, I can make a decision tonight. That's something that I can do. I'm not certain that that's what we as a collective will do. There's value in, in everyone's thought about having a more, a longer process. So we'll continue to talk about it and see what we, what we come up with. But that's my comment for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Smucker.
Thank you. So I just wanna make sure, because he added one, did you count his original two in this So did you give him, did he get three? No, I know that. I just wanna make sure he got the three that he, because you did two and then you did one.
Okay, so based on what city attorney said, we can pick up to three names.
Right, but I just wanna make sure that those original two were put in here, that you didn't just add one and
Well, I was satisfied with the names that I, that I see on this list, so I added one to the list.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you got three.
Thank you.
One. He, my understand
So I was, I think I was clear. I said that the first process had three, had several people included in it, okay? Several people that I spoke with that we decided that would remain on the list. So in addition to those people, I added one name, right? One name and that was it, so.
One.
You just got one, you didn't get the other three in here, the other two.
Okay.
I, I understand. I just wanna make sure that you know that only one of your, one of your names went on here.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Not all three names went on here.
Just one, Commissioner Smucker.
No, I understand that. I wanna make sure he's
Okay, guys, guys, this is, it's not that complex. I'm saying that there were names on the list from the first round that I was okay with. And so I added one more name to this list and that was Marlene, so. Commissioner Smucker, please. Go on your comments, sorry.
One, okay, so he had one. Okay.
I'm not supposed to have, I'm not supposed to have any number of names. There's two people who I spoke to that are qualified people that are on this list already. So that, they're already on this list, yeah.
All right, so I do have a problem with anyone that voted for more than, than three because I was told to choose up to three names. And in fact, there was somebody that I liked that I would have liked to have picked as my fourth, but because I was told up to three names and I was following the rules, and this is not, to me, that's not fair and it's not right. If we were told up to three names, I respectfully request that the person who put four and the person that put five, remove the names and make it to three because that's what we agreed on, on here on the commission. We agreed up to three names.
Or the attorney said three, four, five when he was talking about it.
But then we said up to three.
Well, just, okay. Hang on, the memo was never voted on. It was a proposed memo. Let me, please. It was a proposed memo. I understand, I understand your standpoint, Commissioner Smith. I understand your standpoint, Commissioner Florham. We never voted on it. Commissioner Smucker, is there any other
Yeah, I wanna add 10 names now.
It's, you're
I mean
If you wanna add more, I just wanna
I'm just saying that we said up to three names and that's what it should be.
We also said that we're gonna give the three names to October 28.
Okay, that being said, are you have any other
No, that's it.
Vice Mayor Jean.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I did consult with HR. I submitted, I'm the mysterious five name person. Mystery is over. No, what I did was I asked Jacob, I said, I, we had to interview or oversee 120 applications. There were 120, 130. When I started doing interviews, I did about maybe 10 or 15 interviews. I sat with certain people, some of them are here tonight. I asked Jacob, Jacob, I said, do we have to choose three or do we have to allow him to choose more? The answer was, you can choose more.
Yeah, because we never voted
So with that being said, I am the mysterious five, five people. But what I will also say is that the decision for me to choose the names that I did was a difficult decision. There were many people on the list to Commissioner Smith's point that were well qualified and I would have needed even more time to really vet. So I do recommend that we do have an interview where we can bring maybe the top five people on the list, maybe people who have gotten multiple names. And that's even up to discussion, but I do feel we need to have a public interview where folks can come in and the public can, have a chance to speak or even observe. And we are, because we're the voice of the people, ideally, that's what it's supposed to be. But I did consult with HR, I mentioned that I can go to a higher number of names. With that being said, I think some have mentioned to make justifications why we selected some of the names. You know, I, I want us to have a public interview because that way we all can express our concerns or our hopes with each candidate and be transparent. And I do understand the public is watching and a lot of us are torn between people, be it, we have Ms. Monastim is on the list, she's been working here for quite some time, but I've shared with her the concerns that I have with her and the hopes that I also have for her as it relates to if she were to go forward. And it's the same with each person that I've selected on the list. So for me, I, I want us to have that process where the seven of us can dialogue with the participants so we can move positively forward as a city. Thank you.
Civility, please. Commissioner Sue.
Thank you for clearing the mystery. So we have three extra votes in there, our extra nominations. I am still, you know, when I was looking through 130 something applications, it was, I was just thinking about who was it that said that we didn't need a headhunter because like calling and talking to and reading each resume was a lot of work. And I understand why Commissioner Jean is interrupting my speaking.
Oh, she's not.
I know, I'm just teasing. I got it, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I'd like to address former Commissioner Kramer's request for us to put out that number, that name, the, the list of names of who nominated who. And if that's possible, if you can read that by today through the mayor manager, is it possible to have Mr. Newman read out the names? Because I'm sure we're all interested to find out who those, who was nominated by who. Then secondly, I think that I understand everybody's standpoint about the nomination of how many people we have. I do think that we need to nominate I do think that we need to, we need to narrow that down. The second thing that I think is, we need to look, I don't know, is anybody curious about the background checks and do we know what, like, what kind of questions we're asking? Are we asking every candidate the same question or are we customizing each candidate to the question that, you know, per candidate? That's something that I would love to hear what my colleagues think about what kind of questions that maybe we asked, we do what Boca did, right? Which is ask the same question to every single candidate. That way we can really compare apples to apples. Then after, you know, when, when are we scheduling that? Are we narrowing this down and how are we going to narrow that? I hope that we would have a very vibrant discussion where we all come to an agreement that we want to narrow it down this way. Or, you know, how is it, how is that list of 11 people going to be narrowed down? That's, I hope that is part of our conversation today. And that's it for me. Thank you. Oh, did I get a response? Can, can you actually?
Let me just go down, please. I don't want to take too much time. Commissioner Chernoff.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for all the calls today and emails. Appreciate it. The, the bottom line is, is that I'm happy that we have so many applicants, okay? The last time that we went through this process, we only had two. So if we have 22, I'm happy with that. We're, and, and again, we all got the memo from Jacob that limited, showed how they all rated. And that, I don't think I heard any objection to what the ratings were. All my, from my seat, I would like to see the background checks be next. We all limit the ones, if we're going to use all fives, all fours, all threes, all twos, all ones, we, we make that decision collectively tonight and give Jacob the order to go out and do the FDLE background checks and then we set up another meeting.
Well, here's the thing, I want to make sure you're finished. Commissioner Chernoff.
Yeah. I'm fine.
All right. All right, so, so just so everyone knows, Donnie picked three.
Not because we voted, not because we voted on it, I just, that was just my choice, three. We didn't vote on it. So you could have put 20, 30, didn't matter. And I want to make that very clear, or just one. So this whole misconception that it was three that never happened because we never voted on it. So everybody has their own choice and I was being very respectful on people's choices because I was being blamed for a bunch of stuff that I was glad that was cleared up because of misinformation and people just coming up with whatever innuendos they want to come up to justify whatever misconceptions they may have. That's just the way people are sometimes. I understand people are passionate about this. I understand that. I understand the transparency aspect of it all. I get that. But the end of the day, the decision rests with us. Because the manager works under our direction, nobody else, because we were elected to represent them. That's how it is. I gotta be, that being said, I understand there's background checks that have to be made. I also, I also threw in there last time when we, when we were talking about this, to have social media backgrounds as well, to bring up all that, to be inclusive of that. That was inclusive. I remember that was part of my, 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 my part of direct directive all those months ago, people want to go back to how we got to this point, right? Remember? Okay. So my thing is that, like, doubt is, I would assume that's the next step, doing the background checks, making sure that it's very extensive or what have you, narrowing it down, like, I'm not saying that everybody on that list is supposed to get it because I nominated someone, it was just one person, it was one, right? That being said, it is a public record. I want to clarify, I'm not saying for you guys to release the, release the information you have right now, but this evening, release it to a group that's just been hawking on this issue to make sure that not just them, the entire public sees how this was all listed out. That needs to be put out. That needs to be put out.
Thank you.
No, no, I know he has a name, but that, that's not what we're discussing today. That's what, that's not what we're discussing today. What we're discussing today is to narrow the list down, pick a date of when we could follow up. And, and I'm, I want to give a little bit more flexibility. We can have these meetings over Zoom, you can record them, people can look back at them or what have you. I'm not saying that we could, we, we should have like a, 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 a meeting where we go back and forth. I'm saying you got, if you guys want to have that meeting and you want to record it with that particular person, it's your prerogative. If they want to work for us, that's their prerogative to do the same thing.
Yeah, but Michael, Michael, as you said.
Go ahead.
This is the most important decision we can make. I think we all should be.
No, no, I understand, no, but what I'm saying is that from a timing perspective, I know you have, I'm not saying, I don't want to speak to, what you got, have going on with the next week or so, but I want to be, I want to be cognizant of how each of our schedules are set up. And I want to give that flexibility. That's all I'm trying to say. That's all. You understand what I'm saying, Commissioner? I want to give everybody that flexibility. That's all I'm trying to do.
I would, you know, I think the best procedure that ever worked of all the times that I've selected a manager was they make, the staff talks to the people that we narrow it to. They see when is the availability where they can all come one afternoon, say from 5:30 to 8:30. They come in for half an hour, one at a time while the other four are outside, do not hear the answers, do not hear the questions. As Commissioner Sue said, maybe we make up a list of questions and we ask them all the same thing and see how they react. They go out of the room, the next one comes in, and then after it's all said and done, they leave and we discuss among ourselves. I don't think Zoom gives you the same strength. I spoke to a woman, I spoke to 30 people today, please, talk about husbands getting angry, but I spoke to a woman, Perla, from Texas. She has an 11th grader, her and her daughter, willing to move here in January, a personality that could burst this room. But unfortunately, her experience didn't show to me better than others, better than others. But there are so many people that we talked to, to narrow it down so that we pick the premium of this list is what we should focus on also. So then the staff can get working on what day can they come? And we have to, the seven of us have to be available. It doesn't work with six. It doesn't work with five.
Okay, so what I'm, okay, so, so take this into consideration, okay? I don't know how long the background checks would take. How long, HR Director, how long would it take to do the extensive one with the social media and everything else? Because I know that, that does have a process time. That should given the holidays too.
And anticipate seven to 10 days.
Seven to 10 days, right? Please, I'm, I didn't recognize, wait, can I finish that?
Sure, okay, after you're done, may I?
Yes, let me get to that point because I'm just trying to make sure on an issue. But if you're talking about the background, go ahead, Commissioner, please.
Thank you. I wanted to echo what Commissioner Chernoff said, which is about the FDLE. I think the FDLE background check is about $25, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And is that, how long does that normally take?
It's instantaneous results for Florida Department of Law Enforcement background check.
I, I can't hear.
It's instantaneous. Immediate.
Immediate.
Instantaneous.
Oh, instantaneous, wonderful, okay. Yeah, because I would love to have that also added on as well. Thank you. Oh, and expanded nationwide.
Okay, that being said, the, the extensive one, because that's inclusive of FDLE and every, and a whole bunch of other checks, that's why I was discussing that issue with, they tried to request about eight, 10 days, give or take? Eight to 10? Seven to 10 or eight to 10?
Yes, seven, seven to 10 days.
So let's just say on the worst case, 10 days, right?
Yes, sir.
So 10 days from now, Madam Clerk, what date is that?
The 18th.
The 18th, right? That's our city commission meeting. I don't, it's all the background checks coming back.
The commission meeting is on the 16th.
He's having a meeting.
Our meeting is on the 16th.
It's on the 16th, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. It's on the 16th, right? So we'll be going into the, to Christmas, the following week. So that being said, just from like a logistics standpoint, from a logistics standpoint, wait, I, city attorney. Because what I don't, what I want to make sure is that we, we do this process, that it is as open it is, not just for one or a few, but for all. And that's why I was, we're giving options for the Zoom because like I understand that that's, that's a lot easier to do and people can record those with different individuals and answer questions and different individuals to make it more cognitive. When we get together for that meeting, when we make, when we, after like we get the background checks and we have an in-depth discussion, those, whatever those people are listed out, we can still pose those questions during that meeting, but at that point, I don't want us to stop us reaching out to each one of these individuals, having more in-depth conversations. You understand what I'm saying, Commissioner Smith?
First place, I think that the in-depth conversation with you and the candidate, see, I was looking for somebody, my new word for B-A-L-L-S is grit. I found a new word. I was looking for somebody that had grit. Because, you know, to be a commissioner is hard enough. They push you down, they threaten you, they put their finger in your nose, they're getting rid of you, they hate you. But to be a manager, you know, if you don't have that personality, how long are you going to last? You're going to come here and be pushed and pushed and pushed until you had enough. Is that two months? Is it four months? Is it six months? We have to find somebody that will have stability and have that grit. For you to talk to them or Phyllis to talk to them personally on one-to-one, how does that benefit the rest of the commissioners? And how does that benefit the public? The public has to see, why, why would you make that your choice? Why are you doing that? I'll tell you, there's a gentleman named Brown, he lived a little far away, there's somebody, a wonderful woman that, Peggy, that I spoke to that had all the qualifications. I didn't quite feel she had the grit, but such strong personalities, Scott Israel, I mean, strong personalities and strong qualifications. But now, when we narrow it down to this list, now it should all be in public. You can still talk to them yourself if you want, nobody's stopping you, but the, the real focus on why we're hiring them, I feel, should be in public.
No, 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 I'm saying we can still have that, but nothing stopped, nobody's stopping you from, from us when we have that meeting to, to pose those questions. I'm saying that we shouldn't be like held back from reaching out ourselves and having conversations.
Oh, no, I never had the power to control any of you anyway, so. Oh, yeah. No, no.
Commissioner Smucker.
Okay, so we have, there was 12 names on the list, but now it's down to 11. So are we going to narrow this line, this list down first? If we do, then we won't, only need the background checks on those people. And also, I have a little bit of a concern about the background checks. I, I don't, I, I understand we're, it's an open, a public record, but I don't feel comfortable with sharing people's background checks with, with so many people.
No, they don't have, they don't have to submit it. I mean, each one, check this out, when we ran for office, each one of our background, we all had to do background checks and all that's public record.
Right.
That's all public record.
When we receive it via email.
At the end of the process, it could be available, but it doesn't have to be during the process.
I'm not saying during, before, after, I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes people apply for a job and they have a background and we may not pick them because of that, but, but they may have done a bad thing and I just don't think it's right to, for the public to see them, especially if we don't pick them and now we're, we're.
Wait, 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 wait. No, I'll get, I'll, I'll say this because I, I know we're, we're trying, we need to limit the names so we can move forward. What I'll say is this, Commissioner Smucker, our lives are open books.
I know, but not theirs.
No, no, to, to, to a lot of, to a lot of people. And some people believe it's like we're supposed to be open up to our DNAs because they feel that that's the way they see it. If you, they're going to have that, that same intensity on the manager compared to us, if not more. So that's just, it is what, it is what it is. I mean, I'm not making that up.
I don't agree.
No, I don't, I don't, I understand what you.
We, we are open to, to the public, but I don't think a manager should, should have to deal with that. And then the last thing I, I want to say is that I want to see how the rest of my commission voted. So I'd, I'd like to see that.
Mr. Mayor, I think the public will know when, when we start interviewing and we don't interview one person that was our final selection because they didn't have a good police record. I think the public will know.
Now, before, let's, let's, to, to narrow it down, we have, I, I'm saying, can we narrow it down to three? Submit the names for, for a full, for a full background check, social media included. We, I mean, we can go down the list right now, it kind of ranks them all to, to that degree. Is, do I have like a motion? Can we just do it?
Can we hear from the attorney?
Oh, city attorney, go ahead.
Just very quickly, Mayor, I, I do think this is basically, it's a personnel matter and I think that the point, I'll, I'll yield to some degree to our HR director, but I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Smucker that these entire background checks should not be released routinely to the public. That's probably, people do have some right of privacy and to the extent that these aren't cursory, they're very detailed checks, that's probably safer. In terms of your previous discussion about doing background checks and holding a public interview just from the count, I mean, listen, this is your process. There's no one to tell the seven of you what to do, other than the seven of you. But in terms of when the background checks would be complete, I just want to point out that when it was contemplated to be a larger number, there had been some discussion about the week of January 5th. However, if you're narrowing it substantially, you have three dates before the Christmas holiday. You have the 18th and you have Monday and Tuesday, the 22nd and 23rd, and you also have the privilege of doing it between Christmas and New Year's. It's entirely up to you how quickly you're able to do it, but you will have background.
So this is what I'll say, this is what I'll say. We can narrow it down to three, right?
Not five.
Or five, or five, or five. Once we, by, by, our next commission meeting, we'll decide on, on the dates and that point on, maybe the, that, that Thursday or the following week or what have you, but I want to give us time to figure out when we could have that interview date and selection date on the 16th during our city commission meeting. Can we not just do that? Because it's next week anyways. We're going to, hopefully, maybe some of those checks will come back soon around later. But if we, if we do this now and agree on just the five, whatever those numbers are, and then move forward from there.
I think it's going to be a, a dangerous date if you do it between the Christmas week and the New Year's week.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that I would go for that, but what I want to do is like, I want to narrow it down to three, you guys want to go five, I'm, I just want to move the process along, that's all. So like, that's my, that's my consensus. I say, I see where the consensus is, I see, I see the numbers, it's pretty clear. I don't want to waste anybody's time. So that's why I was saying like, maybe just cut it down to three because it kind of breaks it all down. And I, and I want to make a, a, a decision where there's a lot of, there's a lot of consensus that's clear from it, you know?
I think, the thing is, the fourth name here is an outsider and I think that we should interview an outsider.
So if you, I'll, I'll agree to four. So can we just say four?
Anybody with two or more votes, I think should be heard, should be interviewed, two or more votes. Anyone with two or more.
I agree. I second that.
I think we should pick the first five.
All right, the first five. I have a motion for, for the first five.
I, I make a motion to pick the first five.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At our next commission meeting, we'll pick a date when we're going to decide on the manager and, which will be the date to, to have an interview and a selection on that date.
Well, why do we have to wait till the next meeting to pick a date?
I want to make sure that depending on when these background checks come back, because I don't know, all of them going to come back with a, soon around later, that we have enough time. And I think we will come up with a date on the six, it's next week.
Mayor, to be clear, you're authorizing, commission is authorizing full background checks on the five you just indicated.
Yes. Social media, the whole nine, I have, I've expressed this to Jacob and he knows what I mean by that. If we can go down to the DNA, please do that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just, just so everybody's aware, and I know it's just my, was my recommendation memo, but in the recommendation memo, it was on the week of January 5th to move, to have the special meeting and to do the interviews and the selection.
And if we, and if we, and if we change it, we'll change it, but we'll, we'll make a final determination next week. Is that okay?
I think by, I think by the 16th, we'll have an idea how close we are. So maybe on the 16th, we could set the date.
Yes, I agree.
I won't be available.
No, wait, on Tues, next Tuesday?
Next, I don't think I'll be available, because I'll have stitches.
All right, well, no, what I'm saying, we're just going to make the, we're going to pick the date. I would hope that, you know, taking into consideration how long it's going to take to recover, and you said why-
It takes one week.
Yes, so we, I don't think we'll, we'll do it then just to be respectful.
Wednesday to Wednesday.
The 18th is after your time.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm-
No, I want to be, I want to be respectful for that.
Listen, guys, I don't know why we just can't pick it, the 18, he can't until the 18th. The 18th, we can't do it because it's the menorah lighting. So we have the week of the 22nd, let's just pick a date. I don't understand why we, by, by, okay, but-
It's going to Christmas, it's going into-
Okay, so then let's just pick a date for January now, so that no one-
I, I just want to give leeway to staff and to come-
But we don't need a monthly way.
It, it's still an option to do it on the 5th, that's what I'm saying. I just want to give them, I just want to have a, a little bit of leeway, please Commissioner.
The 5th is a good day.
It's a good day, but just in, just in case, the, the 5th, unless we change our minds on the 16th, we'll just revisit it then, okay?
And if we're all in town on the week of Christmas, if we're all here, we can do it.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we don't have to set it in January, we could set it in the 22nd, 23rd.
Well, that's why I want to pick a date so that people don't make plans. Because as, as every day goes by, people make plans and then, then we don't have the date.
The fallback date will be the 5th, but I'm just saying, we change our minds on the 16th, we can, okay? That being said, we've made a decision on the, the top five, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Happy holidays, everybody.
The top five people are people with the highest, the two votes or more.
Wait, 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 hold on, I never heard who voted for who.
No, we're going to get, we're going to get the list.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be emailed.
Can, can we announce it publicly now?
It's going to be emailed to each one of us. Thank you.
Okay. Today?
Why don't we, why don't we say it out loud for the record? Mr. Attorney, they adjourned, but can we say it out loud?
Thank you, Phyllis.
Marlene Monastine? Okay, I think we should read in the names. So after the meeting, we're, we're reading them in, because the public's here.
The, the top five candidates, based on nominations. The five nominees put forth by the commission are going to be Marlene Monastine, Rasha Kamu, Darvin Williams, Ricardo Mendez, and Hameen Nikvun.
So, I, I want to be clear, Mr. Manager. The mayor had requested that you were going to email every single commissioner's nominees are going to be sent to us, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, all right. I yea to adjourn.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, can we, can I make a request to add those names to the commission meeting even though it adjourned?